I call the meeting the McHenry County zoning board of appeals to order. Purpose for our hearing today is application Z two five zero zero seven zero. The applicant is Lance Leaf Solar LLC and the request is for a conditional use permit to allow for a commercial solar energy facility. There are two PIN numbers associated with this application. They are zero six three five four hundred dash zero two two and eleven oh two two hundred zero one four. The property consists of approximately sixty three point five nine acres and is located on the west side of Illinois Route twenty three, approximately eight hundred feet south of the intersection of Illinois Route twenty three and Bussy Road in Dunham and Omerango Townships. I'll have the zoning board members introduce themselves and the township in which they reside, starting on my left.
Robin Cozen, Algonquin Township.
Mary Donner Greenwood Township.
Charlie Eldridge Richmond Township.
I'm Linnea Coustra in Alden Township.
Mickey Gardner Nanda Township.
Kurt Schnabel Riley Township.
Bill Kurnick Grafton Township.
This petition has been reviewed and the following items have been received prior to today's scheduled hearing. The publisher certificate of publication from a newspaper is dated September five, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of posting was signed and the date posted was September four, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The affidavit of mailing was signed and the date mailed was September two, twenty twenty five, and thereby meets ordinance requirements. The survey has been checked against the petition, legal notice, and publication in the newspaper, and all three match. The filing fees have been paid, the endangered species consultation has been received, and the McHenry County Solar Water Conservation District report has been received. This would be NRI two four zero seven six four six three two. For those of you who have never attended a hearing before, I would just like to go through how a hearing proceeds. The first thing will be the petitioner presents their case to the board and why they believe this solar prime should be on this location. They'll be asked questions from the board and then staff, and then if any member have the public has a question, you will each be allowed three minutes. At the end of that time, when everybody has asked their questions, if there's still questions to be asked, I'll allow you more time, but I'll spread it out that everybody gets their three minutes to start off with. After all the questions have been asked, and again, it has to be related to their testimony here today, and you will be under oath, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so anybody that wants to speak will have to be under oath, and this meeting is being recorded. After that is done, then the staff will give their report, and then if anyone from the public wants to make a statement regarding this, you'll have the opportunity to do so. So that's how it will go, but before we even start, I would like staff to go through the state's standards and what the county is required to do.
So as noted within code one oh two dash one one two three, a request for a conditional use permit for a commercial solar energy facility shall be approved if it is in compliance with the standards and conditions imposed within the act, the zoning ordinance adopted consistent with this code, and the conditions imposed under state and federal statutes and regulations. A county may not adopt zoning regulations that disallow commercial solar energy facilities from being developed or operated in any district zone to allow agricultural or industrial uses. So essentially, the county cannot deny a request for a commercial solar energy facility as long as the minimum siting standards that the state has adopted are followed.
Okay, so anybody who will be giving testimony and asking or asking a question today, I would ask you to raise your right hand if you swear in. Do you affirm that the testimony you give today shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the petitioner. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, CBA. My name's John Carson. I'm the managing partner of Trajectory Energy Partners. Lance Leaf Solar is the fifth project that we've brought to McHenry County. We have four others, starting in twenty twenty three until now. Two things I wanted to address before I go into the presentation. We have packets that we provided for each of you, includes three letters of support and all the materials that we shared with the neighbors, background on that. Other thing I wanted to mention is that we had planned September twenty fourth through twenty sixth as our trajectory staff retreat. We had our staff from all across the state come together to Northern Illinois, so we brought them with, and that's who many of the people in the audience are, in case you were wondering. I will go ahead and dive in. So this is Lance Leaf Solar, a five megawatt project. I'll try, many of you have heard my presentation before, so I'll try to be quick on the parts you've heard. We are an Illinois-based company. Many of our Illinois team is here today. Two projects we've developed that are now constructed are Rockford Solar on the city of Rockford land, Poplar Grove Solar in neighboring Bloom County. Lance Leaf Solar, like all the other four projects that we've brought through McHenry County zoning, is a community solar project. One thing we wanted to add to our presentation today, and if you go to, this is on slides four and five of our presentation, we are getting a lot of questions lately about what is the impact of federal legislation and federal changes that happened this summer. So we wanted to address that question more broadly for the industry, but also specifically how it affects our projects, projects' lives. Lance Leaf, specifically in the legislation that was called the One Big Beautiful Bill, there were changes to the federal tax credits that support these projects and subsequent regulation that came out of the Treasury Department determining different timelines and rules for which projects can expect to see those tax credits. The short version is that this legislation does sunset them and sunset them fairly quickly. But using McHenry County as an example, the truth is, I don't expect to see much of a slowdown across most of the country. It will be a transition period for the industry, but the demand for energy increases, and what we provided here is just a little context about these projects, in particular, the type of projects that are likely to be affected. I think I have a, there we go. So one thing we thought we'd describe is where does the revenue come from for these projects? And in the upper left, the truth is that if you look at it in a net present value calculation, looking at the revenue coming in over forty years, but using a discount rate to say what if that was today, about half the money at the end of the day does come from selling electricity. About twenty five percent here in Illinois comes from the incentives that Illinois has put in place, and about twenty five percent comes from federal tax credits. But the thing of it is, these projects are not all created equally and have very different cost structures. So I used two examples here. Rockford Solar, which is a project that was built on a closed landfill, and Hopewell Solar, which is a project in Amaran Territory, Marshall County, others just built on farmland. That particular site is pretty subground land. What's interesting about these two sites is they're the exact same megawatt size and have almost exactly the same number of panels, but Rockford Solar cost about thirty percent more to build. It was built on a landfill, we had to use concrete ballasts, all the workers had to have protective gear, we couldn't do any trenching in the landfill cap, it was, so each panel essentially costs thirty percent more. However, you can see how much closer those panels are together, you can see that that project is what's called a fixed tilt system, the panels just face south. While Rockford Solar cost more to build, it produces about thirty percent less electricity. So Rockford Solar is an example of it needed the state incentives and it needed the federal tax credits in order to move forward, and I think that's an example of the kind of project you'll see a little bit less of, these more complicated sites, brownfield sites, whereas projects like Hopewell Solar will continue to move forward. In fact, our project today, Lance Leaf Solar, we are planning to move forward with it without any state of Illinois incentives. We are not applying it to the adjustable block program. It has an economic profile that it can move forward without those. And one thing I wanted to address on this front that will likely come up today is that this site has actually come before McHenry County zoning previously in twenty eighteen. A different company put it forward, was approved by the county, but it did not move forward. You probably remember at the time, there was a limited number of these Illinois incentives. At that time, the project did not receive them and wasn't able to move forward. But today, a project like Lance Leaf will be eligible for the federal tax credits. Probably everything you've zoned up until now and maybe a few more months will likely be eligible for those. At a certain point, probably next year, future projects you see won't receive the federal tax credits. Wasn't our project at the time where the Lance Leaf site is now, so I can't speak to the decisions they made, but that's the context there. An unfortunate fact that I'm sure you're all quite aware of is the increase in electricity sales. I, I'm sorry, electricity prices. As data centers come online, I think we will also start to see here in Illinois a little bit of equilibrium, even without the federal tax credits, increasing electricity prices mean more solar projects will pencil and forward, but hopefully that will put more energy on the grid, I really think, to keep Illinois prices lower than some of our surrounding states. So hopefully, this is a helpful context for what you can expect. I do think the short version, especially for places like McHenry County, is to not see much of a pause in solar. Happy to come back and answer any questions, but I will pass it to Mac on our team to talk more about Lance Leaf.
Thank you, John. Mac Kapinski, Northern Illinois Project Development Manager with Trajectory. I know you guys have heard most of this many times before, again, so I'll keep, try and keep most of this short. Lance Leaf is a five megawatt project, approximately forty four acres, produce enough electricity to power roughly eleven hundred homes and provide an estimated hundred and four thousand dollars electricity savings to the surrounding. A little more context on where it's located, about five miles south of intersection twenty three and fourteen, right in between Harvard and Omerango. You guys have heard this before, but why is the project located here? There's a heck of a lot of flatland in Illinois. The important characteristic that this site has is that it's close access to a power line, and more importantly, a power line that is capable of handling additional capacity for solar and a power line that leads back to a substation that has capacity for solar. Those spots are very limited in Illinois, it's becoming increasingly so, the grid can only handle so much. Couple things I wanted to call out here on our site design, you'll see our access road is coming in on the southeast. We do have screening on the northern section of our access road, as well as along the east side of the project. There is also screening on the west and the northeast. You'll notice in kind of the northwest, you notice on kind of the northeast there, there is significant natural vegetation that is already screening the project from view if you're looking at it on the screen. So we know how important wetlands are to McHenry County. Our original site design, we had panels proposed to go over the wetland and our access road coming in from the north. We have since redesigned the project to put our proposed access route to the south and moved around some panels at a cost us, again, to avoid any impact to the wetlands at all. System will comply with all the setback ordinances you have laid, setback requirements you have laid out in your ordinance. Fencing, as we do with most of our projects, we're proposing a standard agricultural style fence as opposed to the traditional chain link fence. So it will be a single access tracker system. Again, this is something you barely saw six to seven years ago, as opposed to the traditional fixed tilt system. It'll actually track the sun throughout the day going from east to west. The technology has come a long way in the last six to seven years, and the maintenance on it is very minimal, and the increased production makes it worth it to go with a single access tracker when we have the space available. Standard valve installations, we plant pollinate friendly ground cover to help reduce erosion because of the deep root system, recharge the soil, and then improve the local pollinator Screening, touch on that a little bit before, it'll be native tall grass and tall flowering shrubs. Few of the examples are down below there. Solar construction, typically for a system with this size, it'll be about nine to twelve months. System will look substantially complete, well, before then, it's kind of the final few months there of electrical hookups and utility testing that can extend the timeline. Assuming we have a sample kind of construction timeline there for you to see, and then typically the only concrete that's used is to house the transformer component of the system, usually about the size of a car. Decommissioning, so again, state required, we have to enter into an agricultural impact communication agreement, which does a couple of things. One, provides some protections as to what we can do on the land, how we can utilize it, so we have to utilize best practices to preserve topsoil, repair, replace any drain tile in the event that it gets damaged, but more importantly, we have to put down financial assurance to refund the decommissioning of the system. So if we go out of, we go out of business, we're not around five, ten years down the line, or, you know, thirty or forty years down the line when it's time to take the system out, there are funds sitting there with the county along with the decommissioning plan to take everything out and restore the site. With that, I'll turn it over to Hal to talk through community outreach.
Hal Sprague, Community Engagement Manager. You've heard this before, this is a very important part of our project process. We start the process by sending mailings to all the people who are in close proximity to the site, ahead of the time when we, like a week before, we then go out and knock on their doors. We take packets like you've got, maybe not quite as much material, but we leave them on the doorstep, or we hopefully, if people are there, if they're not at work, and we get to talk to them on their doorstep about it, answer their questions. Most important thing is to answer any questions that they might have about it and to make them aware of the project long before we get to a zoning hearing, and we were able to go out a couple of times and talk to people. We can't always see people because they're not always at home, but we make an effort to talk to everybody who has received a letter. And then we have an open house. This time, we had an open house at the, at the library in Omergo, and, you know, half a dozen people came, and we were able to answer their questions and talk to them. And when we talk to them on their doorstep or when we leave the packet, there is an invitation to the open house there, so they're all, and in the letter that we sent out, there's an invitation to the open house. So we know all that, the dates for that ahead of time, and we're able to tell everybody, at least in their mail, if they open their mail or look at the packet, then they know that that's available to them. The information is, as you can see there, typical, a lot of it is what you've got there. The solar overview is the document that has a lot of questions and answers answered. The deck that you're looking at, there's an earlier version of that. There's a two pager that describes the, some of the benefits, and those are, and a site design map that you're looking at here is similar to what they got. We'll also reach out to the local government officials, like, in this case, there are two townships. I was able to make a presentation to the Omergo Township trustees in one of their regular meetings. Dunham Township declined that, but said, thank you for, you know, reaching out. They did respond and say, thank you. The fire departments that we think are going to be responsible for this site, it's going to be the Harvard Fire Protection District that's going to be responsible, and they said they don't have any issues to date. I know they'll have a chance later on when we do the building permit to weigh in, and we'll, we'll work with them on getting into the site, all the access things. So that's a, that's a longer term engagement that we have with them. In the city of Omergo, we reached out to them as well. And of course, I do reach out to county board members, particularly those members in whose district the project will be. So there are two county board members who are in District Eight, and they're well aware of what's going on in case they hear from constituents about it, they know about the project. And I've given the packet to, pretty much, Mac and I have, to all the county board members, so they're, they're pretty aware of the project already. That's all I have.
Thanks. I'm Abby Whitelithy, I'm the Director of External Affairs for Trajectory, and I am just going to quickly run through the project benefits. Again, these are concepts you're familiar with, but as John mentioned, Lance Leaf Solar is a community solar project, which means residents in McHenry County can subscribe and save on their utility bill. We like to work with local organizations in the county to ensure those opportunities are provided to local residents first before moving on to other folks in common territory. Additionally, this project will be billed with union labor, creating local jobs, and does generate new property tax revenue. We're estimating that in the first year, this will generate thirty thousand, and over the thirty five year life of the project, almost six hundred thousand dollars in new property taxes. Like you have seen for other projects, this does benefit local taxing bodies. I'll highlight the significant impact for school districts here on slide twenty. And with that, I think we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay, we'll start at my ring. Mr. Kurnick.
Just a few questions. First, what I see here on your, I'm drawing vegetative screening, it looks like through the wetland, that's existing. I also see something designated a tree line. That's existing vegetation that you referred to that is going to assist in the screening.
That's correct.
I also see here, proposed alternate access road and POI location, right there. Why is it proposed alternate?
If for some reason, the state or county did not allow us access from our primary location south of there on twenty three, that would be the backup. We'd prefer not to use that because that would impact a stretch of wetlands.
The, the quote noise generation equipment that you have consists principally of inverters, transformers.
That's right. The, yeah.
And those are located, I see here, in the far southeast corner.
That's correct. Those are over four hundred feet from any residences at that location.
And I note that, looks like the entire area here is part of our sensitive aquifer regeneration area, you're familiar with that?
Yes.
And the soils are supposed to, at least, pretty high leachability. What safeguards do you take during the construction process to avoid negatively impacting our aquifers?
So the entire project, first, will have a stormwater protection plan and system and best practices in place prior to construction, including typically put, depending on what time of year it starts, we typically put ground cover down, temporary seeding before we put the permanent seeding in place. But the projects themselves, and we've got some background information in here, do not have any leaching coming from the panels or any concerns like that. Compared to the typical pesticide and herbicide application of farm ground, there's significantly less from solar.
And based upon your meetings with the area residents, what concerns do they express to you?
There were a couple. One, one had to do with a bird species and the safety of the bird species. We're not aware of any impact to birds from solar panels. Another one was the southwest corner of the project. There's a property to the, just to the left of the corner, those folks use, they farm the land to the south, and right now, the landowner allows them to go across his land in that corner to get there, and they asked if that was going to change, and the answer from the landowner is no. He will continue to allow them to pass their tractor, you know, other equipment through there. So those, those were the primary questions that I got.
None other that you recall?
No.
Is the, is the, is the site currently being farmed?
It is.
That's all I have at this time.
His name, again, he did not say. He passed it to him, but you didn't say who you were for our.
I apologize, I thought.
But that's okay.
You gotta do it every time you talk.
Every time you talk.
Okay.
It's because otherwise, because of the way they track it.
Okay.
Then they don't, for this being videoed, it's not as important because obviously the, for the court reporter, it's helpful, yes.
Hal Sprague, Community Engagement Manager.
Thank you, Hal.
Okay, Mr. Schnabel.
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Grafton.
I just have a few. Now, you were talking about, you know, your construction plan and so on and so forth. Now, are you just the developer for this project, or are you actually going to do construction? Are you going to operate the site once it's built?
For this site, we will most likely work with a long-term owner operator, and we will not be the ones operating it. We make sure that everything in the lease, everything in the special use permit is followed, and we also do guarantee that the project's built with union labor.
Oh, you do guarantee that?
Yes, we include that in the project documents and make sure that that happens.
So you're hands-off with construction and with operation, that you are developing the site, is it correct?
We stay pretty closely involved, usually a year or two past construction completion, but, but yes, yep, we bring in a long-term owner operator who finances and then owns and operates the project.
Okay. Another thing that was brought up was the fence, I think Mac brought that up, chain link fence all the way around it?
Proposing an agricultural style, yeah, as opposed to the traditional chain link, yeah.
So you're okay if we put that in our conditions?
Okay.
All right, and just out of curiosity, are they single-faced or are they bifacial panels?
Bifacial, pretty much every project at this point is built bifacial.
Not the last couple we had. Okay, that's it, thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Dunn.
I, I only have one, and it kind of lands a little bit on what Bill was talking about to begin with. We hear a whole bunch of, we have a lot of questions from people about the quality of the panels themselves and what they're made of, and, and people are going to die, or whatever they're, they're thinking is going to happen. I assume that that's because of the advan, advances in technology, which you indicated because of no leaching. Could you expound on that a little bit, on what's happened over the years that your project is not going to affect anybody like that?
Absolutely, and in our packet, and we'd be happy to share with anyone in the audience, we worked with BBJ Group to look at all the research that is out there on these panels. One photo you've probably seen over the years is, there's projecting, I believe it was Nebraska, that was hit by softball-sized hales. What's really interesting, if you look at that photo, is that the panels do not shatter. They're built like your windshield is, so they will crack if they're hit by a softball-sized piece of hail, but they do not shatter. What BBJ Group looked at is actually studies where they were expressly trying to create conditions that would get the panels to leach anything, soaking them literally in acid baths, crushing them with multiple passes of heavy equipment, and what, what we see is that these panels really are not leaching anything to the outside environment.
Okay, and that those are the panels that you use? I mean, there may be other ones out there that are different, but the ones you use do not.
That's right, yeah, and that's really industry standard.
Great, I appreciate it. No more questions for me.
Mr. Cozen.
Thank you. I do recall your prior presentations, and I may have then as now appreciate for the detail and the quality of the information that you entered into the public record. With that, I'd like to go for a moment back to the BBJ Group report. One, one element is how they speak to the toxicity characteristic leaching procedure, which is the TCLP, which I think is what you were describing as the acid bath and other thing.
That's correct, yeah.
That's correct, because it also goes on to quote, "They created an environment that is an overexaggeration of the worst-case scenarios that we're likely to see in Nebraska or possibly even in McHenry County."
Exactly.
Then going further to that, they also speak to the point that the semiconductors are encapsulated between layers of glass and back sheet with another layer of glass, which that encapsulates whatever is the metal material or characteristics that are out there in the field. Is that correct?
Exactly.
And, and so that even if, even if one was to experience extraordinary breakage, the release exposure, the cadium, to quote the study, is negligible, is that correct?
Exactly.
Correct? And then it also goes on to talk about the composition of the various materials that those solar panels have. One element that is not mentioned, and I don't know if you are prepared to address that, is the lead soldering for any electrical connections.
There's very little that I'm aware of. There's very little that I'm aware of. These panels are really sort of plug-and-play. Each panel comes with its own wiring which connects to the next panel in front of that. Those go to combiner boxes. I really refer to these projects as Lego sets. The Electricians Union maybe wishes there was more of that work to do out there, but frankly, they're really built to be assembled and quickly connected with... I imagine there's soldering on, I guess like the transformer put together, but that'd probably be at the factory, not at the site.
But within the panels themselves, maybe something that, sorry to spring the question on you, is just a thought, because it has a less than 1% composition of other metals?
Yeah.
And I recall back in the day that solder was used in electrical panels, and maybe that's something you can speak to at some other time.
Yeah, that's something we can take a look at.
There's, there's also shows, an evaluation, the report concludes, which says that the level of magnitude is a number that I, if you share with, in terms of cancer risk and hazard risk to the soil is de minimis, if that's, can we agree on the use of...
I understand what you're saying.
One other study again, which you bring with great totality, is Page 20 of your table of solar property taxes.
Yes.
I just want to be clear, because I, without a slide rule calculator, it shows the two, first of all, it shows the property tax bodies by name, is that correct on the far left-hand corner?
Yes.
So, they are as they exist today. First of all, what is the life term of this project that was used in the formula for this table?
Thirty-five years.
Thirty-five years. And so, in the first year, am I correct in doing the math, that the change of revenue between the two, two school districts will be a combined $18,000?
That's correct.
And that, am I correct, that the total change of all the enumerated taxing bodies will be an increase of $28,000? And that will be for the next 35 years?
That's correct. The way the tax assessment is, is done is it's a statewide standard to assess the value of the site. It goes up each year according to the CPI. It does have a depreciation value, but then levels out at year 19 and doesn't depreciate any further. So, it's a revenue stream for years, and I often like to point out, without us asking any, anything, we aren't asking for curbing gutter, we aren't asking for, you know, tax incentives from local taxing bodies. And it's been really interesting, there are counties now, you know, McHenry County's a little bit larger, has a larger budget, but for some of these more rural counties, this is really meaningful revenue that's coming in.
Nor would you be likely taking any books out of Marengo Union Library either.
No.
I have no further questions.
And I have no questions. Projector Energy always does a great job in your presentation and provides us with all the information we need, and thank you very much.
Does Steph have any questions?
We have no questions.
Okay, at this time, any member of the public that has a question, you'd be allowed to ask your question. I have my timer set on my call. You'll have to identify yourself and list your mailing address, and then you'll have your three minutes. So, anybody that wants to ask questions, please come up on the right, my right here, and then you'll be allowed to ask questions. Does anybody have questions?
Luhan, do we have a comment at the end?
Yes, you'll have your chance, your three minutes for comments at the end, but this would be a time only for questions. Yes, sir.
I have a question. When you, when you talk about...
Again, you have to identify your name and mailing...
First time here, I apologize. My name's Corey Wilson. I live at 305 North Route 23, right next to where you propose to put these huge telephone poles, where I'm going to walk out my, my front door and look at them every single day. And to me, that, that for one is an eyesore.
You asked a question, though, now.
No, I understand, can I get to that? My question is, somebody was saying about the taxes going up in the school, is that correct? Okay, so, in, in the process, our, our taxes are going to go up on our property to pay for the solar farm, taxes to pay for the school. So, and in the same process, our value of our property is going to go down because of this solar farm right in my backyard.
What's your question, sir?
How, how is this helping me or helping the residents of Marengo when our, our taxes are going to just go up?
I'll just briefly go back to the tax slide. So, what technically happens here is that our solar farm is assessed at a certain level set by a statewide formula. We are, to get to these numbers, we're multiplying that by the, the mill rate. And I will say, you know, we've done dozens of these, and you guys have a pretty low mill rate compared to other places. I think the city of Rockford, that number is 13%, as a matter of fact. We don't decide, so what that means is more money will be going into the school district's coffers. It's their decision if they're going to use that extra revenue for something, or if they're going to use it to lower the mill rate. I've seen it go both ways. So, that is one direct benefit, but I think a very large one as well is our commitment to using union labor with all...
That really didn't explain the situation of, of our taxes going up.
We...
Not at all.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, your taxes will not go up to support this project.
They will, they will. If you're, if you're going to raise the taxes on the schools, is going to increase the real estate taxes. Everything goes up. When you tax something, everything else goes up. So, our real estate property will go up if, if, the schools are getting taxed more.
No, we'll be paying additional taxes to the schools.
When I just asked you, I said, I asked you a minute ago if the taxes were going to go up for the school.
I meant, I, I meant the, what I'm sorry, sir, what I meant is the taxes that we paid...
Then you don't have very good information either. Well, I asked a question, and you clearly couldn't answer it.
I got something to say, too. Chris Wilson...
You got a question, Chris? You gotta give him a question.
It's got to be only a question.
Question and statement.
No, mistake.
No statements or anything, Chris.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, he has a hearing, he has a long time hearing.
I might not have heard everything said, but...
Only a question.
Just hope I say something wrong. Chris Wilson, live at 305 Illinois 23 also. First off, it was denied last time, not so much by the county board, which, my opinion, it should have been, there was one gentleman that was opposed to it on the county board...
This is not that hearing, this is this hearing. You can only ask questions regarding the testimony.
All right, we'll go back to the... Question, you gotta have a question, Chris.
Where the power is coming out of a property, right along our driveway, which, to me, is completely unacceptable. You're affecting many...
So, you want to know what the electricity is?
On a property, why can't it go underground at the very least, or out in the middle of a property? And another thing, this property is, many people are affected by it. There's thousands of acres in McHenry County.
Okay, that's a statement.
If the board has to put it on property in McHenry County...
That's a statement. Let him answer your question.
Choose a different piece of property.
I can't, one thing I can't clarify, sir, is, so, this is where the energy comes into the inverters and the transformer. It does go underground until it reaches the interconnection poles that are required to put the energy...
Which is right next to our home.
Yes, this is their home.
Absolutely, eyesore.
But they can go underground and go up...
Or it could go to the other location. Your proponent, excuse me, my name's Corey Wilson.
No, you can't, you can't...
Or it could go to this other location.
Sir, your time is up. This gentleman has his opportunity to speak. Let's be respectful. And this is a question, sir. Your comments can be later.
So, the question is, why can't it go underground at the very least?
All right, that's a good question. Let him answer.
It does go underground from the transformer and the inverters, but in order to get the energy onto the 34 KB line which runs on your side of the street right next to the house, those poles are above grounds to connect onto the existing monitors.
So, there's no...
I'll just make statements at the end.
Anyone else have a question regarding the testimony? Yeah, sir, come on up.
All right, my name is Charles H. Miller, Sr. I live approximately right in this area. What is that going to benefit me? And whose property is this that you are putting this solar farm on?
Sir, I'd be glad to briefly answer. First of all, our landowner is here today. He's a, a local resident. And I'll just sum up the, the benefits again. This is a significant investment in infrastructure, and 60% of that is for building trades, union labor. There will be lowering of electricity prices through community solar subscriptions for McHenry County residents, and we'll be paying, we will be paying additional taxes to the school districts, significantly more than are currently being paid for the agricultural use.
It still doesn't say what it's going to do for us, for the people around this. What is it, what's the monetary value that we're going to gain?
I think, sir, it's, it's pretty similar to, you know, on the north side of Marengo, there's a number of factories. They pay property taxes, they employ local people, but it's not a traditional thing in the United States to have, when a business is located in a community, we're giving benefits to the broader community, not necessarily to immediate neighbors.
So, what you're saying, we don't benefit anything by you putting a solar farm around us?
I think it would be...
It's a, it's a direct opposite.
Let him answer the question.
I think it would be fair, it is a fair point to make that there are many community benefits, but not any particularly higher benefits for the initial, immediate neighbors. I think that's a fair point.
There are no benefits whatsoever.
He's agreeing with you. Okay, okay, you can make your comments later. You done with your questions?
Fine, you cut me off.
You're only allowed to ask questions. You're not allowed to talk. Only they can talk.
Anyone else have a question? Again, at the end of the hearing, you'll have your three minutes to make any comments you want regarding this petition. Okay, we'll move on to testimony by the staff. Please give us your report.
So, the subject property is Zoned A1 Agriculture District, is surrounded on all sides as well by A1 agricultural zoning. There is a conditional use that was granted just across the street to the southeast. That was for another commercial solar farm, but that has not been constructed at this The land use of the, of the property is currently agricultural, and then all of the surrounding land uses are also agricultural with single-family residential as well. The future land use designation for the property is agricultural. Here, I did go out to the site, the, the two required zoning signs were posted. I believe that all of the county and state standards have been met for this project.
Anyone have questions for Steph?
No.
Okay. Okay, at this time, anyone who wants to make a comment. Now, you can come up and say whatever you want about this project, you'll have three minutes. But again, you need to identify yourself with your name and address, and then you'll have your three minutes, so. Anybody who would like to come up and speak, just come up on the right. Yeah, come on up, sir.
Paul Brown, 7015 Mill Road, Hebron. I just want to stand here and, I've been a few of these here hearings, and some of the benefits that I, as an employee of a company, benefit from this. We are, I'm a representative for the Mid-America Carpenters. We actually have apprentices that go through training at our training centers, all private through that, that are trained to put these projects together. We give them training, they make wages, and they're actually local. We have, actually have companies that come in from out of state, come in here and actually bring people from out of state, take their money, and leave. Here, these gentlemen actually hire locals, which is beneficial to the economy, mechanic economy, lay economy, and strong in areas. Again, the union carpenters make a decent wage for the area, and again, it builds the economy. Couple things that I have, I live in McHenry County. I have a sewer field that's going in just down the street from me, within a half a mile. I'm a beekeeper, and pollinators, it's massive. I love my bees, and so do a lot of people. It's very important for the, the, the area, for the pollinators. Everybody likes my honey, and I just want to say that they keep on telling me that, so it's one of the best. I have no problem with the solar fields in the area. I'm actually on the grid, I benefit from the grid system. I was one of the first ones to sign up for it. I get all the discounts that were given to me at the early stages. So, we do benefit from this a lot, from these discounts. So, again, I just want to stand here in support of the sewer field and many others that come in the area, thorough process, and again, build the economy in the area and taxes, which helps as well because it works. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a comment? Yes, come on up.
My name is Pat DeCopp, I live at 967 Delaware Road, Crystal Lake, Illinois. I've been a resident of McHenry County for over 55 years, and have had solar on my home for 11 years. My husband and I have advocated for solar rooftop as well as community solar for many years. We support similar projects, and this one enthusiastically for Lansley Solar Community Project, to be located here in Marengo and Dunham Township. I'm interested in seeing more solar projects for our community towards energy independence and support moving away from fossil fuel, electricity generation. I'm pleased about this project. I want to help many community members to possibly subscribe to projects to reduce their energy costs and help improve, of course, the health of our planet. I also believe this project will provide multiple benefits to the county, community, boost jobs, economic development in this area. I look forward to the county and township becoming subscribers to the project itself, supporting renewable energy in Illinois and saving on their electric bills. I will continue to inform other members of the community about this project and other community solar opportunities. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, I would.
And your name and address.
My name's Corey Wilson, 305 North Route 23, Marengo. My comment is, what we discussed earlier, is that there's absolutely no reason that this telephone poles need to be right next to my home. If there's an alternative proposal thing, then that's where it should be. It's affecting my, the eyesight of my home when I walk out of my door every day. I'm going to look at these telephone poles, and I almost can guarantee you, nobody would want to look at them when you walk out your front door every day. And if there's an alternative to put it over in the wetland, if it costs you guys more money to put it there, then that's not my problem, you should do so. You shouldn't affect the person that lives there, and affect, like this man said, affect our quality of life, and that's what that is doing. When you're taking away farmland, which produces feed for the farms around us and produces ethanol for our fuel, you're taking it away, and you think there's nothing wrong with that. Great, solar's fine, put it on top of buildings, put it on top of other places that it doesn't need to be used. This is valuable farmland that you're taking away. Valuable, and it should not be used.
Anyone else?
You gonna go? Go ahead. No, you go. I'll follow you.
I'll forget other stuff. Well, don't forget nothing.
I try not to. Chris Wilson, 305 Route 23. If for some reason this project gets approved, which would be a shame, it got denied once already, and hopefully, as our representatives of McHenry County Board sees how it's going to affect many residents, it's fine for somebody in Crystal Lake to really appreciate the solar farms... It's fine for somebody in Crystal Lake to really appreciate the solar farms, and like I said before, there's thousands of acres where residents are not affected. I don't know how many, shame on me for not doing the research, but many residents around that property that are gonna be affected. And I'm hoping that's why it got denied last time, if the county isn't gonna deny it, hopefully the state will. But again, to have that power line is one thing, right along the driveway, that for sure is unacceptable. There's alternatives, like my brother said, and maybe some other residents will comment. At the last meeting, people commented about certain types of bushes, little ones, I've heard from other people in the county that have driven by and looked at some of these projects, the bushes die, they just sit there, hang up all over, they sit there for, I'm not gonna comment on how long, but residents have told me for quite a long time, whatever that means, I don't know. But like I said, the bushes die, they don't even get replaced. At the last meeting years ago, somebody proposed a very minimum eight to 10-foot trees to at least block the eyesore. Again, that's if the project goes through, which we can only hope that it doesn't. So, any resident here that it's really affecting, which it's affecting us, although there's X amount of acres being farmed between our house and the actual panels, but we still don't wanna see them, but there is resident, property owners where they mow right up to this adjacent property, and the panels will be right there in full view, depreciate the value, unbelievable. How much? No way to know till you sell your house and get out of the county if they keep approving all these solar panels. Just thinking, I don't know if I have a timeline on how long I can talk, but.
You have 20 seconds left.
Hopefully.
Do you have anything else to say?
Well, sit down for now, and I might get back up.
No, this is your chance, okay? Anyone else?
Residents speak up if you want.
I don't know where to start.
Name and address.
Mike Grismer, 9014 Voss Road, Marengo, Illinois, Carl Township. Is that a good start?
It's a great start.
All right, shoot. My brothers, well, I should say, my family came to Huntley, Illinois, on the western side in 1964, and me and my brother started a farm. There was three boys, I'm the oldest, well, me and my next brother continued farming, the two of us, and we quit in 2005 after 41 years, okay? Pursued other avenues. The statement I'm gonna make is that I made a mistake probably eight years ago when I had the opportunity to buy that house, and if I would have bought the house, there'd be no complaint. But I didn't buy it because my wife and I donated property to my grandchildren, I have 10 grandkids, okay? We donated property, a little over 100 acres, it's some productive, some are trees, and it has produced income. It was producing enough income to buy that, how many acres, 60 or whatever it was, 10 years ago, when they had an auction, that's why I say I should have bought that house, but I didn't. Instead, that house is surrounded by junk. I hate to say that, boys, but the house is surrounded by junk, it was terrible.
He quit.
I'm talking.
You didn't go to the auction.
Well, you have an auction, I'll get it.
No, you didn't. Don't talk to us.
Okay, one person can talk.
I was at the auction, I bought what I wanted to buy. Anyway, Matt came to us four years ago, five years ago, whatever, it's immaterial. He's a decent man, I'd ask questions, but he said, I've been through this before, questions that needed to be answered, if I didn't get a good answer, I pressed him, he came back. So, I gave the property to my grandkids, they bought some more, they're doing good. It's called taking care of your family. So that's why we're here today, they have this petition. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a statement? Oh my God. Hey, do you have a closing statement, sir?
I think I'll be brief, just.
Oh, sorry, let me switch over to here.
Okay.
One second.
Two quick things that I'll highlight. First, again, just to clarify, this site with a different developer was approved by the county board in 2018, but did not move for it at that time, the lease expired, we signed a lease with Mr. Grismer in the last few years, and look forward to helping bring renewable energy to the ComEd Grid here in Marengo Township and McHenry County. Two things I'll just quick mention, we have a number of projects with residents even closer than we're talking about here today. Rockford Solar, there's actually a county board member who can see it from her backyard, and especially a project like this, once it's been in place three or four years and the vegetation really gets settled, and it really just becomes a part of the landscape. Poplar Grove Solar was finished construction in 2023, we recently saw the village clerk for Poplar Grove who told me they have not had a complaint from any of their local neighbors during construction or since it's been in operation. Happy to take any further questions, but I'll pause there.
Any further question? Okay, we'll move on, we'll close the hearing portion of this meeting, and we'll move on to the voting portion. Could you put up the conditions for consideration? There's so many there, it's a lot of reading. I'm just gonna ask the board members, you've all had this in your packet, the proposed conditions for consideration, is there any objection to me not reading them, as long as you've had them in your packet?
No objections.
No objections, okay.
Out of term, I move acceptance of the conditions as proposed.
I second. First, I'll ask, are there any additional conditions proposed? Okay, hearing done, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mary Donner, second. It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge and accepted by Ms. Donner to approve the conditions, is there any discussion? Then I'll call for the vote, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
I.
Mr. Koenig?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so the conditions are approved, seven to zero. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the petition.
Acceptance of petition, subject to conditions.
Mary Donner, second. It's been moved by Mr. Eldridge, second by Ms. Donner. Sometime Charlie, go, let me finish my sentence. But anyhow, discussion, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes. This is 65 acres, plus or minus, on the west side of Route 23, fairly close to the midpoint between Harvard and Marengo. It is one of the more rural perks of the county, it is agricultural, with agriculturally zoned land pretty much entirely around it. Staff has testified that they have met all of the state and county standards, and pursuant to state law, if they have met all the state standards, we are obligated to vote in favor of it. Having said the foregoing, this is an area where I think it's a perfectly reasonable location for a facility like this. We've had a couple in recent times where I've been somewhat nervous about wetlands or oak tree remnants that are gonna be significantly impacted. This has none of that, this is crop land, which is going to be improved over the 35 years that it's here, because there's no question that the native plantings will improve soil over continually having row crops planted on it, year after year after year. The solar industry has evolved over the last number of years, so there were panels that were potentially toxic, they no longer seem to be in use, at least in this country. There were other issues that we heard early on that have all pretty much gone away. The one other thing that we've heard recently, and is not present in this, is battery storage, and battery storage is something that is of concern to us, because the batteries are made from toxic heavy metals that, under adverse conditions, can either catch fire or explode, and, at least in my view, we don't have enough information to know just how dangerous they are yet. But that's not here, right here, we have just solar panels in a very rural location, I think this is an ideal location for it, and I support the petition.
Ms. Gartner?
I agree with Mr. Eldridge, this is a good location, and your presentation was very good, as always, thank you, lots of information. And for the people who don't have all the information, I really encourage you to look into it and find out more, and if there's any way that you can work with the neighbors and move your polls somewhere else, or paint them green or something, I don't know, then I would encourage that, in any case, I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Cozen?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Short response is that I'll be supporting this petition. The documentation that's been brought forward is substantial, it also goes to an issue that this county does not play east off of west. And being, as you can see, when this hearing began, there was an enumeration of townships, and being from the most urban township, it is good to see that there is a continuation of an attention to reinforce the electrical grid from east to west and west to east. Those of us in Algonquin Township as Exhibit 3 states cannot install solar on our roofs, especially roofs that are in a contrary direction to take a benefit from it, but as the exhibit points out, there still is, through a community solar, an ability to take a benefit from that off of our monthly bill, but more so, even though we are in the early days of fall, my personal memory has not forgotten the heat of this summer, and at no time did the local utility company advise us to go into any type of brownout, turn off the compressor, or walk away from the most desperately need services that are provided by electricity throughout the county. One more point, in those exhibits, it may be helpful, speaking directly to the applicant, I recognize my time, Exhibit Point Number 11, it may be helpful to customize that, so when the reference is to utility, it says Commonwealth Edison, and so we will know who is that utility company that is directing the seven poles along that driveway. Also, it may help that under the various panels of benefits of community or solar, it may help to try to be more specific in terms of the location and the customer. And lastly, I look forward to the day when the photo on solar overview comes from one of your facilities with the grasses that are blooming in McHenry County, regardless of the township, and to summarize, I will be supporting this petition.
Mr. Schnabel?
I will also be supporting.
Ms. Donner?
Mr. Cozen, you are so eloquent, all of you. Every meeting you do this to me, because now I don't have anything else to say, and trust me, I try to say something, I am in support of this project.
Mr. Koenig?
Just a couple of additional comments, the thought of moving this access road and point of connection up into the wetlands is a non-starter. The ordinance requires that solar farms minimize the impact to wetlands, so moving, suggestion of moving the point of contact up into the wetlands, as I said, is a non-starter. Contrary to the perceptions of the gentleman, you will not be, the residents will not be paying more in taxes, what's going to happen is, by virtue of these solar panels being on the farmland, the assessed value of the farmland is going up, and they're gonna be paying more taxes, and that's gonna result in increased money into the coffers of all of the taxing districts. So, that said, I am in favor of the petition as well.
And I would say the only other thing that the neighboring property owners, if you subscribe to the solar farm, you'll save on your own electricity usage, and typically, that's what's been done, is that the community solar offers the benefit to the nearest people first, so you get a, you know, you get a benefit on your lower, you know, lower electricity, which, when rates are going up, as was mentioned in testimony, with these data centers and everything, that discount on your electric is gonna be even more valuable. So that's a direct benefit to nearby homeowners, should they decide that they wanna be a subscriber to this solar farm. So I agree with the other comments of my colleagues, and I'm in favor of the request, so I will call for the vote, Mr. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Gartner?
Yes.
Mr. Cozen?
Yes.
Mr. Schnabel?
Yes.
Ms. Donner?
I.
Mr. Koenig?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so let's go to the county board, seven to zero, approving the This time, hearing's closed.